Hey, hey.
How's it going?
It's Thea.
Hi, there.
How are you?
Fine.
I haven't seen you in a while. Thanks for coming to this thing.
Oh, we're good, okay. All right, we'll bring the meeting to order. All right. This one. Okay. Oh, thank you, yes. Johanna's here, okay, and then we have.
Three public attendees.
Okay, two public, oh. I just found it, so the attendees, is that, is it Leona, you and Johanna, is that?
No, so that's on the panel aside. Unit taker, Leona, so that it will record on her computer.
Okay. Oh, great, perfect, thank you. All right, so, public comment. So if you are attending online and not in person, star six to mute, and then, so the star nine is to raise the hand, is that unmute them then, or do you have to unmute them once they do star nine?
When they raise their hand, I'll have to go over and allow it to talk.
Okay.
And then, they can unmute themselves, once they've been given that permission.
Okay, great, so if everybody caught that star nine, raise your hand, Ben will then unmute you, and then you have to unmute yourself as well, so it's like a three-step process, once you raise your hand, okay. So, and then I'm asking everyone to keep their comments to three minutes as possible. So, public comment period, Mary.
Well, thank you. Hello, and glad to be here in person. Mary LaPar, Home Valley, although I live in Home Valley, I still have Stevenson in my heart. For public comment, I just wanted to talk about the Rock Creek mitigation project. As you all know, that the Rock Creek mitigation project was done because of the bad stuff with the dredging for Rock Creek. And so there was an off-site mitigation project that is down on Levens Point. Now, that is not a new beach for Stevenson. It is supposed to be a rehab area with trees and bushes and everything else. It was, when you do a mitigation project, you're doing something for something bad that was done someplace else. Because I consider the Rock Creek dredging was totally unnecessary. So, just to keep that in people's historical perspective, I know some people would love to make it a beach, but it is not. It was put there for a reason, it was an off-site mitigation project for the Rock Creek dredging that was done in 2007. And, although it'd be nice to have a beach, so sorry, sometimes you can't have your cake and eat it too. So, it is a rehab area, and apparently some people are starting to think that it's a beach, especially when it's a person type borders. So I really want the city to pay attention to the history of Levens Point and the off-site mitigation project that was done. I will be keeping an eye on it for sure. I can say, you know, human beings have this tendency that we want to have our cake and eat it too. And sometimes you have to take the piper and not have your cake. And that, so, our environment is way more important than having making something a beach that isn't intended to be a beach. And our microdiversity and our vision, I believe vision law by Sam Cole are, were the people who are taking care of that project. Evan, Evan from our microdiversity near, and that, and I've been in touch with them, and we wanted to ensure that that stays how we have an off-site mitigation project, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Anyone else have any comments that are not already on the agenda this evening? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just stopped here, forgive me.
Oh, ma'am, could you please state, oh, thank you. Say that again for our. What, I'm sorry, say your name again. Could you say your name again, just for our note taker, I've talked over you, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Your, your name and words.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Fuller, and I live over on Hot Springs, Carolina. And this afternoon, I looked at my computer about five o'clock or so, and there was a document, I'm on your email list, which is a good thing, but it was 188 pages, and I didn't have time to read it, obviously, I read pretty fast, but not, not that far. And so I wondered if, perhaps if there are documents to come out, because this one came out at three o'clock this afternoon, three thirty or so. And if they could come out like earlier, so people who like meetings don't read real well.
Right. I, I like to read them on the weekend, so I'm totally with you, so that's something I know Ben and I, Ben's been working on getting those out.
I didn't know if it was, if it had to do with the meeting tonight, or last month's meeting, or the meeting to come, or I wasn't, I didn't know what it was.
Yeah. We, we do, I know Ben definitely tries to get things out, you know, Friday afternoons. Again, same with me, I'm in the same position, I work during the week, so it's very helpful for me to have it Friday night, so I can look at it over the weekend, so, yeah, I absolutely agree, and we do try to get that out. I, I assume that was this, though, right? That what came out this afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay. So we seem to do a little better job getting that out ahead of time, Rick?
Hi, Rick May. I want to kind of come to the fancy, a lot of this, this information doesn't come in until the last minute, so these are updates to it, so there are, there wasn't earlier one that came out, and these are updates, and the updates come in really late because there's documentation that comes in, when there's comments in the public, they need to go in, so sometimes it needs to be, you know, done in two sections over there, so I kind of understand sometimes when it's in the eleven thousand.
Right, absolutely, thank you. Any other comments that are not on the agenda specifically?
No, but Davy has joined us for a moment.
Oh, hi Davy.
Hey.
All right. So, moving right along, minute for May tenth, twenty twenty-one. Everybody had a chance to look over them?
I move for approval.
I'll psych at that.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks Davy, all opposed? All right, motion carries? All right, moving on to old business. Zoning amendment, increasing residential building capacity. Subcommittee report, public involvement, yay.
Yay, I had a memo for you, just saying who was on the subcommittee, and Jeff, as you know, was delegated to me that's all left.
He was, he graciously agreed to. Thank you, Jeff, for doing that.
I'm more of a, I guess, weakness. We started sort of an email exchange, we didn't actually meet as a work group in person until last Friday evening, but we had a fair amount of email exchange in terms of ideas, and I had set out some questions that I, I wanted folks to take a look at in advance, in terms of what we needed to focus on, like, what were our goals and expectations from, from that process going to be, and what questions or issues do we, were we seeking public input on, and should we use workshops, or is there some other method we should go with? How can we make sure we get the right people to participate? How can we interest them, provide some incentive for them to, to join us? And what information does the public really need to have to be able to join in a, in a discussion? And do so in an informed way? And what should we do, should we use the existing draft that we were working with as a basis for discussion, or should we just start with a blank slate? And, and finally, looking, that any public involvement process ought to close the loop by being accountable back to the folks that come to a workshop and offer advice, they ought to be able to go back and tell them how we use their advice, you know? Where does it show up in the document, if we used it, if we didn't, why didn't we use that, that advice? So those were the general questions. We sat down the last week, last Friday night, and we had great participation, and I think we got a lot of ideas on the table, everyone was there to sort of express what their thoughts were in terms of how we should approach this, or what are the, what are the key elements that we need to have, and how would we do that? And so it was more just, I, I think, a, a general exchange of ideas, very useful, a lot of good ideas, and now we're sort of faced with the prospect of taking all that input and sort of synthesizing it and organizing it and, and moving it into a more specific and focused plan of action. What is it that we need to do, how do we need to prepare? How would we, we would, would we conduct that process? And it was interesting to me that I think one of the key elements that I think all of us around the table had is, before we go out to the public, we really need to define why we're doing this, this zoning review. What's, what's the basis for? Why should we be talking about this now, it's, what's the, the need, the incentive that we're, we have out there to take this issue on? And Mike graciously agreed to help us sort of flesh out a statement of, of need, but you know, we're really looking at, you know, the comprehensive plan gives us sort of a baseline in terms of the types of housing that we want to provide, in terms of cost and type and location. And we know that we've heard concern from, you know, from the public, from business owners about how maybe a lack of affordable housing is affecting their ability to, to hire and retain employees. We, you know, we've looked at the residential housing needs analysis that was done by the EDC, along with the, the city as a participant in the, in the Johnson Report. So we, we know sort of what has generated that, that interest, but it's going back and and being able to articulate to the public specifically why this is important to them, or why they should be interested. The other top, one of the other general topics that we spent some time with is, is who do we want to participate? And what do we expect from them? You know, everybody says, well, we want to have the current residents, and someone says, well, that includes homeowners and renters, doesn't it? Yes. And others said, well, what about some of the local businesses or the developers, builders? What about just landowners out there that have vacant properties, you know? And, and finally, we said, well, how do we, we get to those folks that, you know, have been suggested as being underserved, those folks that are seeking housing and not able to secure it? How do we, how do we reach them, how do we include them, because they may not even be within the community, for example? Those are some of the issues that that we're trying to come to grips with. The real, so we really want to know, again, we can, we can draw upon all the reports and studies in terms of needs and types of housing, and where the gaps are, and but we also want to make sure that we're sensitive to, you know, you know, the comprehensive plan and our own desires to maintain quality of life here in, in town, so how do you, how do you engage the public to better understand what it is they like about the town, their community, or their neighborhood? And what is it that they want to see? And, and how, asking them, how should we take care of our current needs, or to what extent should we take care of, or plan for those future needs that we're seeing in some of these studies? And then finally, another key item was, again, going back, what information do they need? And how can we make it accessible and understandable? We're generally not going to lay these reams of paper out there in terms of the comprehensive plan, the current zoning ordinance, the housing analysis, the economic market report. You're just not going to toss that out to the public, should they have access to those documents, by all means, they should have access. But you could bury folks in that information, they're not going to, to look at it. They may not even draw the salient points out of it, because they're not spending the time with it, so how do you provide them with the basic information that they need? How do we come up with a, summaries of those key documents, and, and what their, their importance and their relevance is to the discussion we're having? And how do you distribute, do you have fact sheets, do you do, you know, presentations, do you have displays, do you use social media somehow? How do you get that information out? And then, that's what keys you over, that's all sort of in advance before you really do any sort of public forum. You know, you're, you're trying to generate that interest, inform the public, advise them as to why it's, why they should be interested in this and participate. And then we want to come up with, with a public forum, and we had some discussions in terms of how that might work, you know? There was the general term or the general use of the term workshop. But workshops can encompass a fair amount of ground in terms of how you, you organize them, what the format is. But the desire was to make sure that we have, whatever we do, whether it's a broad citywide workshop, or some smaller neighborhood work session, or, or forum, is that we, we organize those so that folks feel comfortable in terms of providing their input. I'm sure we've all, or at least many of us have been to public meetings where you've got a good size group, fifty or a hundred, and oftentimes you have several strong personalities that sort of dominate the conversation, and you don't hear from the rest of the public, so it was one of the things that we talked about too, is how do you, how do you make it so that whoever shows up feels comfortable in letting us know what they think? And then how do we take that information back, how do we use that? And then come back and, and talk to, talk to them again about the, the recommendations that we may generate as a planning commission to send to the city council? We were thinking about the schedule, I think it's, it's still pretty, pretty general, but probably into the fall, because there's a fair amount of work due just to get ready. But, and of course, we want to be sympathetic to the fact that people do other things and go to meetings in the summer. It's not high on their priorities, but it's, so we're, I think, probably looking at meetings into the fall, you know, that's sort of September, October timeframe. We have set up a site so we can exchange ideas and, and, and working documents, so we can prepare. We want to get together here toward the end of the month, and our desire there is to really start to put the bones on a more specific, step-by-step plan of action. And hopefully would have that, that available, and, and, and start with that implementation in, in July. And one of the things too that is of concern is, we want to define, again, all that work that needs to be done in advance, because this work group doesn't have the capacity to do that, we just don't, and I think until we, we can identify what it will take to, for example, come up with summary documents, so to get that information out to the public, how do we do that? How do we, we generate that? Because we're not going to have time to write that, I think the group can review that kind of stuff and, and offer comments, but we don't, and until we really lay out what needs to be done, I don't, I'm not really sure we're really able to say what the resources are, or the capacity that's needed to do it, so there's, there'll be a tension there in terms of, of, of how we, how grandiose we are at our plans, and what resources we have to implement them, so. Mike, anything else?
That was an excellent summary, Jeff, I think what I would just, the only things I would add with that, I, yeah, I one thing that I think we were trying to get to was to have some greater definition to the public participation process. Getting input from the residents as to what type of, of, of public participation process they would like to see, what will satisfy the needs of the community members in terms of presenting substantive issues before the, before the planning commission to the public, so that we can ensure that the public feels that they've been adequately heard. So, we are having a meeting later this month to the subcommittee to discuss this, and I think at, at that meeting, we can hopefully get some initial feedback on that, what will constitute effective public engagement to the public. And then, in the summer, help to further define that process. I thought in July, we would getting some input, or allowing July for the public to formulate some ideas as to what they would like to see. Then in August, maybe having some more steps that then we would begin to take to fulfill that. But one of my goals out of the subcommittee meeting was to hopefully come up with a model public participation process that the planning commission could point to, or decide to execute for future projects, to say, well, we have a zoning issue that is before us, let's go to the model public participation process and use this process we use for the increasing residential building capacity, and use the same process, so we kind of have a a framework and a model that we can use for future projects as well.
That's great, yeah, I like the sound of that. Davy, any comments? On what you had just heard?
No, I think Jeff covered everything pretty well, and thank you, by the way, for putting together the Friday thing, a lot of work going into that, it looked like. Lot of work going into that, it looked like. I guess the only thing I would, Jeff kind of covered this too, but is the outreach. And I'm sure this is not you guys' first time at the rodeo, but I, I just don't want to see anybody say, well, nobody asked me, you know? So I just wanted to be sure that we had that base covered, but it looks like we do.
Yeah, Davey, that's, that's a good point because I think one of the things we've heard from folks on the work group is, well, I never knew that this was going on or I never heard about this, you know? I say that the public involvement, but I never heard about it. So there's always going to be someone out there that you don't reach. But, you know, clearly, I think what it suggests is, is we need to be more proactive in terms of how we do that. It's been tough with the COVID-19 and and actually those efforts we had, even though they were sort of remote, that Ben put together those questionnaires, they generated public interest. That's why we have this work group. And I think the desire to reengage the, the public on these discussions.
Great. August, any comments?
Well, I think that's going in a good direction. I'm all for public involvement and taking that as transparent and easy as possible.
And, and it is one thing that came up in the meeting was that in terms of the interests of the planning commissioners is that we err on the side of seeking greater public participation and and comments for projects that are before us. At least it's been my experience in time here that we tend to be interested in getting in, uh, comments from the public, input from the public. And during the COVID time, we saw different ways Ben did an admirable job with the variety of outreach methods. Because we were concerned that we needed to get additional groups, you know, a fair amount of public comment on things. So I think that we are interested, concerned about the public and the public's interest in any project that comes before us.
And then before I open it up, do you have anything, Ben? I was going to open it up for any discussion.
Well, I wanted to, Jeff, uh, to talk about one thing about the tension in the group's focus is in part between creating a model city process for all proposals that the planning commission could use or the city council could use and what we do for this specific one. Do you want to?
Yeah, you know, there are, um, there are, there were a couple of folks on the work group, Phil Crawford and, and Tracy Grado. They're, they're interested in a much broader sort of community involvement process that the city could use. And while I think that's a, that's an idea worth considering, I think what we're really looking at is, is how are we going to do it for this, this zoning process? Uh, and how are we going to put that together? Kind of a, trying to eat the elephant, I guess, a bite at a time, you know? Let's take something that's modest and, and yet challenging and make it work and see what we learn from that. And I think Mike makes a good point that you want that feedback from the public is how do you best reach them? I mean, we can sit around the table and talk about, well, you know, here's the standard public involvement process. We can use that, but if it doesn't meet the needs or attract the public, we're missing the boat. So, uh, I think what we're really focused on is what can we do for this? And, and I think as Mike says, it will give us a basis. It's kind of a prototype that the planning commission might be able to build on and adapt when we look at other issues in the future.
That's good. I like the sound of that. I was
And Rick was on our work group too.
Yeah, I was going to ask Rick here in a second, but one of the things that you touched on, Jeff, I was talking to a young gal that works down at Walking Man and she works in the kitchen. She's a cook. And I was chatting with her and she said, oh, I need to leave. I have to drive to Washougal. And I said, oh, I thought you lived in town. And she's like, no, I can't find housing. I'm driving every day back and right. It's the opposite. We used to have commuters, right? Going this way. Now we have service folks who can't find anywhere to live here. So when you were talking, I was thinking to myself, how in the world, other than I just had a conversation with her, my husband and I were down there having dinner, chatting with her. And I wouldn't have even known that she was driving to Washougal. So it's like, I don't know in this separate process how you would reach out. Cause like, let's look, we're starting to do a good process of the residents and stakeholders, right? Contacting them on the subcommittee. But how would you, I don't know how you reach out to people like that. How do you, I really don't know.
I don't think we really know at this point. You know, we've, we've talked about things like, you know, talking to those folks that, that are managing, you know, apartments or other, and to say, gosh, have you got a waiting list? You know, do you have any vacancies? Uh, because really, even when we look at, uh, at the housing analysis, you know, the general assessment was, there isn't much of a way of vacancies in, in, in the county or in the city. So, um, you know, in fact, even Mike was talking about how he had a hard time finding a place to live in this, in the city. So, you know, there are ways, I think maybe we can kind of back into it, but we could also, you know, we talked about reaching out to some of the employers too. And saying, hey, we're doing this, you know, can you help us in terms of, you know, employees that you know are, that are having a trouble finding housing? Just there are ways to do it. It's going to take a little, a little effort, but
Better ideas on how to do that after the next couple of work group minutes.
Right, just try to get more.
But yeah, I think reaching out to the restaurant, maybe putting up flyers.
Right.
And other information to the stakeholders that aren't residents in the community. It's important.
Great, thank you. So I just want to open it up for anybody else to make comments. Rick, any, any comments?
You know, it's, uh, it's just a pleasure to have you two involved in it. Jeff, uh, you know, you're calm, cool and collected. Um, you really want to, you know, I really get that you really want this to work and you know, it's really clear that you're an excellent listener. And so I appreciate you being on it. So as a member of the public, I just want to personally thank you for taking this on and having that kind of effort. That's the first thing I want to say. Second is, is that I think that what became clear is, is what, what brought me into this to begin with is that I really don't understand what's driving this, um, you know? And that's, I think that's a good spot to begin on any kind of major change in any kind of zoning is, you know, is to come in and say, we have a problem or we have an opportunity. And this is what we think is going to, going to drive us forward to be able to solve that problem or create another opportunity for us. Um, and originally it was brought forward, this zoning change was brought forward as portable housing. And I think we all realize now that this is, you know, this is a very, very big elephant. And just doing a zoning change would not really create much of a difference. It has to be a combined efforts. And that it's difficult and, you know, my heart goes out to Leanna because she did all this work and then that, that got shot down and maybe rightfully showed to be shot down. But it's going to take a community effort to come in and try to figure out all the moving parts to be able to put this together. And part of it begins with conversations like that, getting interested parties together to try to solve this and, you know, break it into, uh, into digestible parts. And I think you've begun that process and we'll move forward down the line. But again, the first is, is to find the problem. And I think that that's going to be true on anything that you bring forward that's significant.
Yep. And if we set up the framework, right? It's, you do that every time.
Right.
Right. So, and thank you, Rick, for volunteering to be on that subcommittee. Appreciate it. Anyone else have any comments? Mary? Yes.
Yes, thank you. Mary Rappar. Um, as I was listening to Jeff, I, I think the core of, uh, the issue is why are we doing this? I, I don't think anybody's answered that yet. So, and what is driving this? So until you solve that problem, I, I think, uh, you know, looking forward to September, maybe putting the horse before the cart or the cart before the horse, excuse me. And, um, some questions that I had as I was listening, will rezoning actually help to solve the housing issue? I mean, is zoning the problem or is it actually housing policy? Is it internal or external forces that are driving this? If it's external, which is people moving into your community who have a lot more money than some of the people living in the community and buying up the housing stock and driving up the price of everything, that's not zoning. That's an external pressure. And changing zoning, uh, is not going to help you build more houses. So, um, that's just a question I think needs to be answered. And, um, the housing policy is actually, I think a good place to start because what type of housing policy actually makes affordable housing possible in an area where you have external pressures driving the housing prices? And normally that means that the governing bodies in your community are going to have to step up and make policy changes. And you have rent control, you have, uh, oh, I can't remember the deeds, but the public governing bodies buy the land and they build the affordable housing. And then deeds are made for that housing to stay affordable housing. It cannot be sold for 30 to 50 years as anything but affordable housing. And then, uh, you know, WAGAP and Mid-Columbia Housing Authority could provide you with a lot of information about housing. Because I don't know if you saw that fire at the post office, WAGAP was offering incentives to landlords because they can't find any housing for people who need it. And, and the other question is, we live in a community. And if we want that community to continue as our community, where people are vested in the community, they, they stay here, they have children, they have grandchildren, you know, and they go to Arizona sometime later and their children are here. And so it's a continuous cycle, but you have that memory, that communal memory. So it depends what kind of community you want. If you want a bedroom community or you want a community that actually lives here and dies here and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yes. Did you have a?
I would like to, oh, my name is Sarah and I'd like to vote for both of these people, the President of the United States. I agree completely with what they're saying.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments?
One, can I have one more?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Rick.
One of the things is that, I'll just tie into what Jeff was talking to is how do you explain the 2020 study? And the, uh, what's the other report that starts with a J?
Johnson.
Johnson report, thank you. Uh, you know, how do you explain these to him? One of them's 100 and some page document, another one's 80 some pages. You know, at least with the 2020 report, there is specific recommendations for the city of Stevenson. And that's really an excellent, there's, there's some of those that are really, you know, how do you create senior housing? How do you create more affordable housing? Um, and, you know, like for instance, one thing that I've mentioned a number of times and I'll mention it once more is the first recommendations for the, for the city of Stevenson was to allow one detached and one attached housing in like the R1 zone. And, you know, that increases the amount of density by 50% right off the bat in the R1 zone. Allows flexibility for more senior housing. Obviously it allows more flexibility for affordable housing. Because you're going to be building 800 square foot. Um, and also spreads out, uh, the, um, the people of, uh, medium to lower economic classes into our communities. So they kind of rub, uh, shoulders with us instead of sticking them over in a section of the community. So part of solving this problem, I think, is just looking at it and again, looking at it piecemeal. And that's, this obviously wouldn't solve the problem. I'm just saying, you know, if you look at some of these recommendations, you can, you can solve a little bit of it here and a little bit of it there.
Yeah. And I, you know, and Mary raised the question, you know, is zoning going to help? I, I think that's, that is a question. It's a discussion that we talked about, you know? What do we have zoned out there now, you know, in terms of residential zones? And what is yet to be developed? Um, you know, we don't have that more detailed inventory and we've talked about it.
Actually, we do. And it's in the report. We have, we have 852 available units. So of course, as far as the 2020 report goes of, of either can house someone's family dwellings. That's, that's what they came up with.
Yeah. And, and I, and I think that's a starting point, but I, I think we could be more direct in terms of looking at what's vacant and and why is it still vacant? What are, what are the incentives? It goes back to the fact that zoning isn't, isn't the sole answer to, to housing. It goes, goes back to what are our other policies? What, what's our infrastructure? What are the lenders and financing folks doing? You know, what's the capacity of the, of the builders and the, and the developers? It's a multifaceted problem. And that was one of the things that came up in our conversation on, on Friday night is the complexity of the issue. And what role does zoning play in addressing that, you know, the housing needs, both the current or the future housing?
Yeah, there's just a lot of layers. Yes, go ahead, Dave.
Hi, Dave Cox. In listening to the conversations, it seems like we are forgetting about the individual landowners in the city and what they want. Maybe they have a piece of property that's been in the family for 25 years and they're not interested in developing it. Maybe they want to hang on to it for their posterity. But yet it's included in the study and all of a sudden you're saying, well, you know, you could put 10 units here on that piece of property. Well, maybe that individual isn't interested in that. And so as far as I'm concerned, the study hasn't contacted those individual landowners that they're saying that that is available and that's available and that's available. And I think that's a missing piece that you guys have in, in this whole thing. Is that you haven't taken into account what those individual landowners want to do with that piece of property? And why is it still vacant? Maybe there's some very good reasons why that is and you can't answer that. So I would just suggest that maybe you take a little deeper look into those studies and find out what exactly these people want from the community.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great comment. If, say for example, you needed a, you know, 150 new residential units out there and you had land zoned for 150 new units. Are you going to get 150 new units? Probably not. I think what we know is, you know, from, from any jurisdiction is that you can have land zoned for, to accommodate so many residential units. But that doesn't mean you'll get them because it's not just the zoning. It's, it's, it is the landowners and, and the economics that drive a lot of that. It's what can we do in terms of zoning to, to help ease that situation to provide some incentives?
I think David has, you have a great point, you know, and that is we kind of run into the fact that, you know, we only have a certain amount of resources, you know? And, you know, what can we know and what can't we know with the resources that we have? And that's an unfortunate thing. And so maybe we just have to take a guess and go, well, we, you know, if everything was developed, it would be this many. But let's assume that only 50% of that is actually going to go that way. I think we just have to go to something like that that they'll figure out because the time that it would take to go to individual owners would probably be too cumbersome.
Yeah, we just have to realize here, no information is going to be perfect. That's right. I have to act with imperfect information.
Well, I, I think one of the reasons why you've got all the pushback you've got on this issue is because people don't want to do what you want them to do. Okay, uh, you know, you can build an extra ADU. Well, no, I don't want to. And, and that's probably why you've got so much interest in this issue. Yeah, just because you have something available doesn't mean that it's going to be used the way you think it should be used. That's why I propose for the government bodies and perhaps with private interest addressing the affordable housing issue, which is separate from zoning at this point in our community. So, uh, yeah. The reason you got 50 comments, the last time we went through this a few weeks ago or something was because people didn't want to do what you wanted them to do. And they didn't understand why it was coming up. So I think those are important questions to answer.
Can I make a, a, just a response to that? It's not that we're wanting them to do that. We're asking for their input. So if they don't want it, that's the input that we received. So that's, so, so this process is working and, and, and that's what I'm getting at is we're not driving anything. We're asking the question. And the community is giving us feedback. That's what's going on. It's not an us versus them. We're not trying to force anything. So it's not, so I just wanted to sort of
Yeah, nobody's being forced to do anything. It's just that they're, they're pushing back against the suggestion.
Right. And that's what we need feedback on.
Well, I think you're going to get it.
Dave?
I think it kind of, it's kind of like the conversation my wife and I had just a couple of days ago. She says, you know, I really think that we can put another, separate out the lots and, and put, put another house there. And, and I said, and why would we want to do that? Well, think of how much money we would get. And I was, and I said, no. And I was, and I said, no, I like my big lot. And she says, well, I know, but, but, and I said, honey, no. She says, but, so I don't know where we're going with this. But, but I am feeling the pain here of the people that have property that, no, I don't want to go there. And then somebody's saying, well, you know, I'm going to give you a bunch of money for your property. And, I mean, yeah, it's a, it's a myriad of problems.
Yeah, comment, yeah?
Yeah, I just wanted to say too, in response to Mary's comment, that even if this were to go through, that there was a possibility that you could do this with your property, it doesn't mean that you have to, you have an option. So just wanted to point that out too. And then secondly, in response to Dave's comment, my husband and I lived in Sherwood, Oregon for a bit. And that's exactly what happened, is everybody in Old Town separated their lots, we didn't. We had the biggest lot in the whole area of downtown. And everybody at, at some point said, wish we would have done what you did.
Yeah.
Wish we would have held on to it.
Can you explain how the zoning change comes in, that it changes to R2 and R3, that you don't have to do it?
I mean, you know, if it's your property, you don't have to put an ADU on it.
Oh, oh, no, yeah, you don't have to do it, put an ADU on it. But you would have to do minimum, you would have to do minimum sizes for the lot.
Oh, right, absolutely.
And you'd have to hook up the sewer.
If you put, if you develop it.
Right.
If you develop.
If you don't develop, you don't do it.
Yeah, that's insane. So if you don't develop, you've got, you have the option of whether or not you want to develop it. Right, that's the point.
But I think, you know, we've got all this quote sort of technical information in terms of, you know, housing needs. But Dave, I think, you know, you kind of hit the nail on the head. You know, what is it that, you know, the community wants to see in its neighborhoods? You know, the character, the quality of life they have, what are their concerns? What are their desires? You know, you know, how do we, how do we meld that with what we see as increasing needs for housing and still maintain a quality of life? We can sit here with the technical stuff, but what we're really looking back for is, is what can the community tell us about what it is they'd like to see in, in, in the residential areas?
And you know, Jeff, you're, you're right, because, I mean, you know, my wife may end up getting an ADU put on her property. But, you know, my next door neighbor might not want that and may want to leave their lot just that size. So, you know, I think we also have to think about that side of it. You know, maybe there are people out there that want to have the opportunity to put up that little house on there for, you know, their mother-in-law or whatever. And, and, you know, you don't want to take that away from them either. So it's just a real, it's a tight rope that we're walking to try to figure out where we need to be at for the city.
And I think one of the things that we've done here in the planning commission with Ben's help is, is this idea of providing some additional flexibility to folks out there in terms of what they, they use, you know, their land for.
I think that's exactly what you're talking about, is the flexibility. And that's one of the things is that, okay, if you, if you allow this to happen, there'll be some people that take it and then some people don't. But you're obviously giving everybody more flexibility.
Right, right, that's the idea. The only thing I want to add, Ben, is I know, I think it was, was it the last meeting, Rick, that you had brought up the 2020 report? I hadn't seen that. And I just want to make sure, you know, when we start one of these processes, that we kind of do a deep dive and gather as much material as possible. And whether it's something where you take a big study like that and provide it to everyone or make it available online, or maybe we keep a library down here where people could check those out potentially. You know, I don't want, I don't want a stack of studies either. And then the other idea, I think, of the Cliff Notes too, if there are salient points in a study that are specific to Stevenson or specific to our situation, to highlight those or do some kind of Cliff Notes would be helpful as well.
It was online, it was on the website and...
And I don't ever, this is what, I'm one of those, I'm a paper person, I do not do well. Okay, I'm just saying, I, you have to print it or give me some Cliff Notes and refer to it. And like I said, if we had a library here and we were working on that, I would come check that out, take it, read it and bring it back. And I think publicly, I'm sure there are other people that are like me that like, but we don't need fifty of these printed. Like I said, maybe we, if we're working on something, we keep a library where people can sign them out potentially as an idea, so.
And our, and our local library does tape documents like this if they're presented to them and they put it in the folder and it's in the reference section.
That's a great idea, Mary, thank you.
So David Wyatt just kind, the county does it all the time.
Great.
I'll add to that though, I know you took a deep dive into that. And when you came back the next time I saw you, I know that you have read that. And, you know, I, I have a complaint that a lot of times staff, I mean, not staff, but people on the council come in not fully prepared and you did. So I just want to give you, you know, whatever kudos I can.
Thank you.
For being willing to do that.
But thank you for bringing it up, so I knew it existed. Any other, any other comments? Do we have anybody with their...
Yeah, I'll just brown solid a little bit of what Rick and David says. You know, that, that idea of flexibility and, and like Jeff said, we tried to, you know, create that ability in the R1 district. You know, but it still doesn't give people in the R2 district that same opportunity, which is, I think I suggested several months ago, that, you know, because we've allowed ADUs in R1, R2 is, you know, you could do a duplex, but what if you don't want to do a duplex and you wanted to add an ADU? Or you already had a duplex and you got an extra ADU as an option. You know, why does a less developed zoning get more benefit than one that's kind of in the middle? So I think, you know, going to that opportunity and flexibility, I think that would address some of that also. Instead of creating a whole new upgrade in the zoning where suddenly you've got an apartment complex next to you in a residential neighborhood where that's where it hadn't been and that's not why you bought your house. So there's, there's, I think there's a big difference in just the feel of the neighborhood and the community with having that little bit of flexibility with adding an ADU, not changing it to an R3.
All right, well, thank you everyone for the discussion. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Mike, do, like.
And Mike.
The heavy lifting.
For the presentation.
Process, hopefully have a better...
All right, we don't, I don't think we have anybody with their hands up, so I think we can, unless there's anything else? Ben, are you good to move on? Great, thank you. All right, new business, planning commission work plan, thank you. We've been needing to do this, we usually do it at the beginning of the year, we're, you know, about six months late on this. But never, it's never too late.
We've got it, it starts on page thirty of the packet. This is the new information that was given to you today. At least some of it is new to you today. So the first four pages are the staff report, where we're laying out potential projects that have been suggested by the community. Many, many of those projects were emailed to you directly over the course of the last month. So those emails are included here as part of the record there.
Yes, thank you for doing that, I really appreciate it.
There are the city council's goals that start that off. There is a section about the ongoing planning commission projects, of which there are several currently. And then potential other projects that keep going on. So I don't have a structured way to facilitate conversation on this. I'll just highlight again some of the ongoing planning commission projects that we're working on. So there's increasing residential building capacity grants that we have. Any of the, I'm sorry, all the deliverables that we have to date are due by the end of this month. And the final deliverable will be a schedule that says we're going to complete that process by the middle of October. And so with the help of this group, we'll develop a schedule that has us on track to meet that time. If we don't meet that time, it doesn't matter, we submit the grant deliverable.
Okay, all right.
And so the conversation can go on as long as it needs to before any resolution happens there. So comprehensive plan amendment, that's one of the big things that dropped off of our plates during COVID. So city staff had submitted a proposal to amend the comprehensive plan. We got into reviewing that and then we realized that we couldn't have meetings anymore and that was something that was big. And so we didn't have that, staff said, yes, you can not meet your timelines for our proposal because of things. The Shoreline Master Program is one that will be coming back to you in December of 2018. You all approved a recommended approval and city council approved a draft to Smith to Ecology. They are really close to giving back their list of required and recommended changes, which sounds exactly like what it is. So there's going to be a list of required changes that they give to us and a list of recommended changes. And so we will run those recommendations through the Planning Commission Shoreline Advisory Committee for recommendation to city council and hoping again to do that around that October timeline.
So October's filling up, is what?
Well, I think that one is going to be one of the easier ones for you to do. One, maybe two meetings on that.
When, when do you expect that back? I mean, imminent, the, the Ecology or...
I think in July.
July, okay, thank you.
So now it's on the agenda for a July meeting.
Okay.
Downtown planning. We are looking at evaluating the downtown parking, the supply, the, the usage trends. And then also continuing to study the community realignment. We've got grant funds to do that, that's going to be a project that takes a heavy hit on staff time. So managing the consultants on producing that, lesser for you all at the, the planning commission level. But that's something that we'll look at. Bad news on that front, at four forty-eight today, the intern that we had scheduled said that he's taking a different internship. So...
Because he couldn't find housing.
I don't know.
He's got an RV for our intern.
So we'll regroup and see what we're doing about parking this summer.
Do we have an opportunity to get another intern or is it...
There were, there were two that we interviewed. I asked this guy, you're interested, everything's fine. He said, yeah, everything's fine. He sent him all his paperwork and said sorry to the other one. And so I could go grovel back to that one, see if he has anything else lined up. And I think he can find it, it was just...
Dave, a question, Ben, what are the requirements of that particular position? And the reason I bring it up, we have a whole bunch of kids who just graduated. Somebody that we could use as a, as summer work to do that information for you?
Could, that I think would take a lot more management on my part.
Okay. And you're not interested in that?
Cause either calling.
At this stage, regrouping and seeing what's, what's going on, so.
Okay.
All right, fair, thank you.
Again, though, in October, we're scheduled to do some conditionally permanent reviews. We schedule those every other year and those will be out this year. Unknown amount, volume of applications. And then what we've had on the, the back burner, just on slowly, is the lot line considerations. So that's one that I'd like to get a full set of public release draft documents and have you make a call on, on the public involvement expectations for that. Those are the ongoing projects. There are other suggestions or other potential city-related projects. The community suggested projects. One of them is related to the downtown parking. Management of on-street parking, which crosses the boundary between planning commission and city council. So I don't know how to work on that exactly. Cemetery planning, doing a joint effort with the cemetery districts on where their, their next one might be within the town. If there is one, was it a community suggestion? Opportunity zones and how the city might lead on opportunity zones was another. Rock Creek, public access and trespass issues that you know from before. I apologize on that one, there was a petition that was submitted that I didn't get into the electronic packet, but you have here tonight, so.
All right, thank you.
That one, and then what you've seen a lot of emails on recently is relooking at the critical areas ordinance. This is one that the state requires of us and it requires us to do a review and then a process every eight years. We lasted it in 2018 and we're next due to do it again in 2026. We can do out-of-cycle reviews if we want to. And you've got some requests to do an out-of-cycle review on that. So definitely want you to address all of that. Like I said, the, the remainder there through page, through the end of the packet is the public comments leading to that, the comprehensive plan section in the city councils.
Thank you, I like the way you broke this out. So I think we should probably just address ongoing planning commission projects first, since we've got five, two of these in the works. Do you have any, Ben, that, I mean, do you have any suggestions of things you'd really like us to? I mean, some of these are, you know, the grant's going to come up in October, so that's already one we have to add to our list, right? The comprehensive plan amendment. That's probably a high priority for you as well, I would think, I mean, we rely on the comprehensive.
You have an application, you have an application that you need to take action on.
Right.
And so you've got a friendly applicant that doesn't mind it being late, but you do, you have an obligation.
Okay.
An application for a comprehensive plan amendment.
Yeah, so, so number, so the first and second, obviously I would say a high priority. The Shoreline Master Plan, when we get that in, I would say that's another high priority. Maybe we're working on that for quite some time. Was it the downtown parking, Ben, number four? Was that the one that you said is kind of a mix? It could be a council issue as well as planning or...
That's, it's one that's interrelated with a community suggestion to create a resident parking system for on-street parking. And that's not something that falls within any zone encoder or any planning.
So folks that have homes downtown then would be able to have some type of sticker, right? That they're able to park overnight and not get towed, that's the issue.
Yeah.
All right. And then what else do we have? So the other ones will just come up as they come and then lot line considerations. So how many of these do you think we can, before we even move into some of the community suggested? How many of these can we possibly take on in the rest of this year? I mean, we're, you know, we're only six, you know, we have six months left, really.
Right, you've got an obligation, I think, on most of those.
Right.
Downtown planning, the parking specific components can be scaled back.
Okay.
The lot line considerations is something that doesn't need to happen, it can be pushed back.
It can be pushed back, okay. All right. Do you, oh, Mary, go ahead.
Well, I, I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Just, just in case you have some time, I'm going to have a chance. I, I think one of the most important things in any community is infrastructure. And this might be a, a good project in the future, whenever we can get to it, is to find out exactly what is the state of our infrastructure? How much do we actually have of whatever we consider infrastructure? And then how much do we need? How much can we support? You know, we, we can have grandiose ideas about adding homes and other things, but we don't have a new sewer plant yet. And our water plant is going to have to be updated. So I think it's good to look at your infrastructure. And I don't ever recall any real report on the state of the infrastructure and how it's holding up and how you're going to fix it when it needs to be fixed? How are you going to update it when you need to do it, update it? So I think that's important in a community, so that you know what your, what your choke points are when you start thinking about development and other things.
I was going to ask Leona to address it, we actually had that meeting. The water system master plan does that exact same thing and it was updated in 2017. I think approved by council either in late 2017 or early 2018 and approved by Department of Health. And then the sewer plan, again, does that same thing, that was done in 2018. And then we again, reanalyzed it for what we need to do for the wastewater treatment plant. And so it was adopted again, an amendment in 2019 as well. And it looks at growth, it looks, but it also does, looks at growth compared to your comprehensive plan and what your growth projections are based on the current development that you currently have. And so both of those, I know the sewer plan goes out to 2040. I believe the water plan you have to do every six years, so we're halfway through that time period. The sewer plan, it comes up periodically. Typically, you're required to do it when you reach eighty-five percent of capacity, your treatment. However...
However, one of the things that the city council did recently was we adopted a program called Facility Dude. And part of that is to track all the assets and the condition of the assets and plan for the assets that we currently have listed to maintain a certain level of service. And so we have the technology to keep up with those plans so that we keep track of where we're at with that infrastructure to try to prevent where we're at right now with the sewer treatment plant.
And and that's the information that you guys need to work with when you're doing all the zoning. That's all I'm saying.
But it actually goes the other way. Sometimes because, because the plans, you know, they're for whatever zoning currently exists. Well, then if you increase the zoning, okay, well, then we'll need to re-up, we'll need to update the plans, but not until the zoning changes. It, it's kind of.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking in order to make some decisions for their work plans, they need to know the current state of the infrastructure. And maybe not in depth, but just like you explained it. And so that if somebody comes to the community, they don't maybe need to read the entire water plan, plan, but they can look at it and say, this is what we have now and these are our limitations or or what we can do. That's all I'm saying. For the planning commission, I think it's important that they understand all the restrictions and the applications of the of the of our infrastructure or the plan.
We actually had, that's Carl's title, then is it? So Carl was early on a Ben. It was the first time, I've been on the planning commission seven years. That was the first time we ever had a meeting to discuss infrastructure, where we're at, where we're going. So we actually did have that meeting. What was that, six months ago? It's eight months ago. I don't know. But that was the first time I've ever had that kind of meeting and it was very well done. And I felt like we all got a lot of out, out of that meeting. So, but a good point.
Oh, let's tell a little bit off what Mary was talking about. The, the twenty twenty study, it stated specifically that the sewer plan needs to be updated because any major zone change. I think there's a really good reason for that. It's just that, especially if you're gonna go to these, these significant areas and you're gonna go, okay, now you have to hook up to sewer and yet sewer is nowhere near you. And if you're an individual property owner and in the sewer is a significant distance away, your property becomes undevelopable. And that, you really can't throw that at somebody. You know, you can't just go, oh, by the way, we're gonna change your zoning and you're not gonna be able to develop and you're not gonna be able to afford to develop. And so, you know, I think it's important to, you know, if I own a piece of property and they said, okay, listen, what's gonna happen is is that you're in the plan and eighteen months from now, we're going to, you know, tear up this road and we're gonna, then sure it's gonna be, then I'd go, okay, fine, you know, I can live with that. But, but without that specific plan, like you have a plan to go up loop road, that exists. I can see it. I know what's gonna happen. But in this, this area, I don't. And so, you know, in fact, because I'm an owner in one of those areas. And so it's like, well, what's gonna happen and how is this gonna work and how can be brought in? Then he's, I think that needs to be answered because without, without answering that question by updating your sewer plan, why in the world would I wanna go for a zoning change?
Well, and, and kind of going on that as far as the extension goes, in, in either case, though, then what we pay for by the developers? It's just a matter of at what point in time.
But the one going up blue roads being paid by who?
The city's paying for it, but we'll have a late terms agreement. So whoever connects to that will have to pay.
More. And that, that's what could be done up there, too, right? And that would be fun.
So it's not the city that's sending it for free, I guess.
Totally understand that, that, you know, whoever hooks up to it needs to pay for it. The question is, is that if you're trying to, if I'm, you know, five hundred feet away and I just can't afford to bring it up at that particular time, but the city's gonna bring it up and when I hook up, I'm gonna have to pay my portion of it, then that, that makes pretty good sense. But without that being in there, then I'm stuck and I can't develop that property. So that's, this is, okay, what's the plan so I can see where you're going to be able to come in the future? So I can, so I can know when the development would happen. So totally agree that, you know, that somehow that's gotta be paid by the hookup fees or whatever it is to be able to pay that going forward. It's just, we need to know what that is.
Right. Go ahead, Mike.
Commissioner Beck here. I would just like to offer up a couple of thoughts and some consideration to this work plan. One, I think the work plan puts before us front and center that there is a lot of planning commission business that has to be undertaken. And then it's a continual process. We've got things that are old business, things that were, have been reviewed prior, things that are before us or proposed to be before us because of prior decisions that were made. But planning in of itself, the, the county or the, the city, sorry, will never have a fully informed public or a fully informed information for a process. It's an imperfect process of muddling through. Decisions have to be made based on the best information we have at the time. So suggestions that, oh, we need to wait for studies and studies to help us define a process. Sometimes that's not going to happen. We have to take what is before us, the best available information at the time.
And common sense.
And common sense, absolutely. I think that all of us try to exercise common sense here. But, you know, here we have, we have projects in the work plan that are ongoing that we need to revisit. We've got proposed things that the public would like us to look at. And when we review any of these things, we're not gonna have know-it-all, omnipotent understanding of things, nor are we gonna have an understanding of every resident's interest or the stakeholders' interest that are not residents. We're not gonna be fully informed. We have to be able during these processes to make decisions. And planning is a, it's a continual process. Things will change, things, the comprehensive plan will change and get updated. These plans, the things that are, will, can change, will change. People's interest in the property, their use of the property will change in time. But I think that in terms of thinking about the zoning, that sort of the increasing residential business, building capacity, we don't need to wait for another sewer study before we make a decision on that and move forward. Because we have a study that's fairly recent, twenty eighteen. And so when we have before us a proposal to revisit the critical areas ordinance, I would not be in favor of that because we revisited this in twenty eighteen. The city made a decision to update the critical areas ordinance in twenty eighteen. And the state requires an eight, as an eight-year cycle for these. So it appears from my perspective that that critical areas ordinance does not need to be revisited at this time because it was recently reviewed and approved in twenty eighteen. And that with all the other business we have to do, we should prioritize other projects.
So Mike, I, because I read Pat Rice's comment and it has to do with the fee and having to fill out a permit to basically do the right thing, like remove invasive species. So when this went, so we went through this process several years ago. It was my understanding at the time that there would be an exemption in a list where people wouldn't have to pay to do the right thing to remove ivy that was gonna kill a tree. So I don't necessarily think we need reopen this. I'm just saying, I kind of agree with what Pat's saying. I can tell you at the time, I did, I, I didn't understand that that's what we were going to charge people a fee and make them fill out a form to take an invasive species out of some, you know, next to a stream. To me, it doesn't make any sense. So I don't know. Good question is, can we address?
Accuracy of that information, but I do know that the critical areas ordinance does address removal of invasive species. It is cleanly addressed in the critical areas ordinance that is allowed. There may be a process.
So maybe that's what I'm saying, maybe we don't need to open this. Could we not open it and deal more with the process and the policy? Because it is.
The ordinance says that it's an expedited review permit. So if you wanna do that, you don't have to hire a biologist to go out there and tell you how to do it. You have to pay the thirty-five dollar application fee, submit the application. If the city doesn't act on it within seven days, then it's considered issued, but that document trail is, is there.
But why do I need a doctor to take invasive species out of the creek, which is what we want people to do anyway? And why am I having to fill out a form and give you thirty-five bucks? I can tell you, I definitely didn't understand that was, was gonna happen. I remember only hearing twenty-five, too, and I was completely against it at the time. I thought we were gonna give people technical worksheets, fact worksheets, take their name down. Okay, do this, don't do that. I mean, I'm a little, I'm a little surprised that we're charging people to do what we want them to do.
Sure.
Doesn't make any sense to me. Mike?
Yeah, one of my concerns is, is that, you know, is that you get a lot of scarp laws too, because, you know, basically, you know, I, I live next to the grade school and the grade schools has people coming over there and cleaning out ditches and stuff like that. I might seem to do that. I'm sure they haven't got a permit to be able to do that. And I agree that needs to be done because that, that ditch, you know, when they built that school, they moved the creek and dug that ditch. It needs to be maintained and that kind of thing. So, you know, what I do is I see a lot of times that that's being ignored. You know, there, the number of permits, I don't know what they've been, but it's been a very small number of them. So one of the things is that if you get, if you create something that doesn't make any sense, then people are going to ignore it. You really don't want them to ignore your rules.
Right, and, and we don't. And that's why I, I guess my understanding at the time was that we were gonna, if they came in and said, we wanna do this, it's, let me take your name down. So we have track, we track it. They don't need to fill out a permit. This is where you're at. Here's your property. And then here's like a fact sheet, because we wanna help you. We wanna educate you on how to do this and we appreciate you doing it because it's helping everyone.
I think the Washington Fish and Wildlife suggests that you don't have any, as long as they remove it by hand.
Right.
That you don't have any permit process, you don't have a process at all.
Exactly. But the idea was hopefully people come in and talk to Ben and we are prepared with an educational fact sheet. Here's, here's the proper way to do this. Don't drive an excavator in here. Use handshers, right? I mean, it's like a simple, so I don't know if that's something we can, I don't really think we need to reopen the critical areas ordinance to deal with that. So that fee and all that information's in the ordinance.
The fee is not the, the fact that there is a fee is in there. The city council can set fees separately.
So is that how that all happened?
The city council last updated the fees in twenty twenty. So I think that, that's when it went from twenty-five to thirty-five.
So then Pat basically needs to speak to the city council about this.
For the that's required, that the, that an application is required is part of the critical areas ordinance.
Okay.
So Ben?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, is the, is the requirement from the critical area or just from my information is that that the city has some kind of paper trail as to what's going on within a, a buffer zone somewhere on a waterway? Okay, and so that's a, that is a requirement of the critical ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah. And what's the, the paper trail does is it can be used by applicants to justify impacts to that buffer in the future. They can document that it was in a degraded state at one point. They're the ones that restored that, so it's no longer degraded. And now the buffer is reduced because they've done onsite mitigation. And so that, that document's important to them or that, that trail is important to them when they do it. It also provides a check against the, the people driving the excavator into it. So this is what it means to be an expedited review permit. You've got to check that you're gonna do everything that way and that you understand.
And so, so for example, if you go and get a biologist to come in and do a study on, on a piece of waterway, wherever it might be, then that is used to actually reduce the buffer area or it could be used to mitigate that.
Right, yeah, okay.
I don't think there's any way of reducing it. You know, you can try mitigation, but there's no process, you know, the, the did some research with the MRSC about flexible buff, buffer list. And I looked, took a look at what we've got. And there's a number of, in fact, as I sent it to you guys, but I sent it to you really late, a list of municipalities and what that looks like to have a flexible buffer where you can come in and say, listen, you know, this is running in a ditch and it really doesn't have, it doesn't need a hundred feet, fifty feet on each side or a stream that dries up. And, and here's my study and here's the engineering study. You know, there's a lot of municipalities that have that. We don't have that sort of flexibility here. I think that flexibility is really, really needed. You know, we're seeing, I had a, a environmental engineer take a look at, at Owl Creek and I've had engineers take a look at, at my property on it, you know, and we've got strange stuff, you know, starting off in wetlands and then going under the school parking lot with the, with the school draining directly into it. Then all of a sudden it comes out from that and it has another fifty-foot buffers that go onto it for a while. Then the school changes it and moves it to another place and that doesn't seem to have a buffer and then the buffer appears again. You know, it, it, there's, there's tremendous amounts of inconsistency in, in how this setbacks are being used. And, you know, you'll, you'll take a look at, you know, that what I just sent you is also a paragraph is that's from the municipal research and service center about you, the needs of to have flexible buffers. And so I think that's what we're coming back to is, is, you know, at least that's the section of what what's being requested that makes the most sense to me is, is that what we've got a system now that's based on the Washington Fish and Wildlife category system. And basically you'll see a lot of municipalities that will have something for streams that dry up that don't tie into other streams because they're not feeding anything else. And they, what they do with those streams, they say, there's no reason really to, to regulate these kinds of streams. But when you only use the Washington Fish and Wildlife, you have to go with their categories and there's no such category as that. So I'm just saying that there's a lack of flexibility. There's a lack of bringing the experts in and saying, there's no need to do this. It could be twenty-five feet instead of fifty feet. So you're basically putting a stamp on every stream here saying they're all the same. All of these NS streams, the streams that dry up. And they're significantly different. The ones that fall on the surface and fall into something else are completely different. And the ones in ditches are the ones that flow for a little while and then dry up and don't go anywhere. And they need to be looked at as separate entities and they're not.
So I don't know how to, I don't, I don't know how to address comments that just aren't true. So a lot of what Rick just said is completely untrue and it doesn't apply to anything about your ordinance. And so I don't know how to address that, but it's not true. You, for the fifty-foot base buffer, doing mitigation work, combination of onsite and offsite mitigation, you can get that buffer down to fifteen feet. You have that flexibility in your code right now. One of the first steps of habitat biologists in producing a report is to review the city's critical areas maps and confirm or correct those maps.
And that's, and that's the biologist's responsibility to put that in his report when he gives it back.
The first thing that's done is to confirm or correct those maps. If they go onto a site and they see that a city has a, a stream map that shouldn't be considered a critical area, they can correct that. And so it's no longer regulated and there's no longer any buffer associated with it. I had this conversation or discussion with Rick via email. I provided him the sections of the code. I asked him if, how he believed that was different. And he still comes to you and says that it's absolutely different and that you don't have that flexibility. You do have that flexibility. That's not something that you need to, to look at.
Have we ever had that?
A different flexibility I'm talking about. I'm not talking about having, going through a whole big giant mitigation process. I'm talking to, looking at the setbacks as they sit and say, what's reasonable and what's not. So I'm in, I'm in complete disagreement here about what we're talking about. Not talking about the ability to mitigate, we're talking about what's a reasonable setback to begin with.
Right, but what you did say, though, was that there are some streams that aren't streams and.
Well, no, some, some streams that.
That shouldn't be considered like a threat. So is that what I was understanding? Okay, because, now have we ever had anyone come in? So we've done it before where a biologist comes up with a report and says, this is categorized incorrectly. You need to update your maps. Have we done that? Okay, wonderful. Mary?
I'm losing track here. Aren't you on the work plan?
We are. We're discussing, add any things to the work plan.
Yeah, and, and the point was made that the critical areas ordinance was done in twenty eighteen. And when does it have to be done again?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, so, you know, whatever issue there might be, it might be something for further discussion. But I don't think it's any bearing on the, on your work plan right now.
Oh, I disagree, Mary, because.
Well, let me finish.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And, uh, uh, critical areas are important to our environment. And anytime somebody tries to mitigate them, it usually means they wanna get rid of them because they wanna do something there that they want and not what the natural processes may be dictating. That's why you have biologists who come in and offer their best available science to help you figure out what's going on with your critical area. So, uh, yes, critical areas are extremely important and they're important here in our community too. Wetlands act as buff, as sponges, they clean your water. They do a lot of things. They also control your water, so it doesn't go into places where it shouldn't go. And that's why you have these wetlands. So I'm not sure where Rick is going with what he's going, but it sounds like a personal issue that's not part of the greater critical. that's not part of the greater critical areas ordinance at this point in time. And if there are changes to be made, then they should be done in time of review or looked at at time of review. And then all of us will put in our strong opinions and, and want
We count it.
You know, I, I understand you've got a issue, Rick, but I, I'm not sure that it fits right here with the work plan, like what they're trying to do. I think their calendar is full.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, again, the issue is, is that, for me, is, is that have we really looked at these wetland buffers? And, and really understand the differences between different kinds of NS streams, streams that dry up. And the difference between one that dries up and doesn't run into another stream, and one that does, one is a ditch that doesn't run into a ditch, because they have significantly different environmental features. And I was looking at the J D White, which I believe is the last time a really detailed analysis was done. Critical area analysis was done in two thousand and seven, and it says streams and wetland boundaries will not be formally delineated or surveyed. That was part of the contract. An individual assessment and classifications will not be completed. So what we're asking is, is that if we, if we think that this is something here where a setback needs to be bigger or, or smaller, and if we bring an environmental engineer in here, and they look at this particular property, and they do a report that's going to be much more detailed than the general report that you have, and it says, well, you know, it's bigger or smaller, I think that that should take precedence over this.
Jeff?
I, I guess, I'm, you know, and, and that may be, I'm not quite sure that what we're talking about rises to the need to amend the critical area ordinance. If there's an option to, you know, to, to address that.
Option without, you know, one of the things that's really quite difficult to, to do, you know, it's like, I think there's two-to-one ratios, and there's all sorts of things to get it down to fifteen feet is a really hard process. But the question is, is that, is it, if it's something that's needed to do, and there's a fifty-foot, and that fifty-foot is viable, and then that's great. That's the rules, and that has to go. All, all that I think some of the public is asking, including myself, is, is that where, where's the flexibility to adjust? Because there are lots of municipalities that if you got a stream that comes and then only flows during a certain time and then disappears and doesn't go anything, that they don't look at it at all. And in fact, one of those streams is the ones that, that was considered the, the best science by the two thousand and eighteen update. That's what they did. So, you know, you've got examples of people that are looking exactly at this and going, hey, you know, there's a difference between this kind and this kind. And when you just use the Washington Department of, of Fish and Wildlife's numbers, maybe you need to have a little more flexibility than their numbers.
And, and I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, Rick. I'm just wondering whether or not we, we need to go through the process of amending the critical area ordinance and, and through all the GMA approval processes to do that, if there's another path to I'm, I'm trying to look for a solution.
Well, it sounds like you have a project that you want to do. Well, I don't, but it sounds like it, Rick. And if you want to present something like that, then bring it to the planning commission. They, you can go through the critical area ordinance process.
Okay, who do we, is it? Davy?
I'm gonna suggest that I don't think these setbacks were an arbitrary decision, and I'd absent a compelling reason to make the change, I'm wondering if this is something we ought to consider.
Okay. Thank you. And whoever has their hand up with the three six zero number, could you please state your name for a minutaker?
Star six.
And star six to unmute?
Okay, the name is Pat Rice. I think the, I've been listening to this comment with interest, and the only thing I'd like to say is I think what's happening is the city didn't do its homework. You folks didn't do your homework in terms of looking at these streams and doing an onsite visit at the time, but you're requiring us to come and do what you should have done. And that's, I think, what the objection is here. You never looked at these streams. You just arbitrarily doubled the size from twenty-five to fifty feet and then come along now and say, well, hey, you can go hire somebody and fix our mistake. Uh, but I think my point was, why didn't you, and we've already shown you didn't follow the science. You, a lot of science has been thrown out there, but when Rick and other people review it and look at it and study it, we realize it doesn't even make the point that Ben was saying it makes. So you're putting the onus, at the same time you're saying there isn't any housing out there. You're taking a lot of land out of development and putting the onus on the developer or the property owner, people like my friend Caesar Hernandez. And, and my only thing I'd like to say to Mary, Mary, I get your point. But you, you a lot of times advocate for affordable housing. This is one of the rule, reasons we don't have more of it, is rules like this. So I, one of the people here just made the, the, uh, points that they didn't want to make an arbitrary change. Well, I think Rick and I and other people are suggesting that the whole fifty-foot vet setback rule was made arbitrarily and capriciously. And that's why we want you to look at it. I think you made some mistakes. If you had been site-specific, like some of the science suggested, you would have walked onto some of these properties and you would have said yourselves, not make me pay the fine to prove it to you, hey, this doesn't need a setback. Uh, or this does. So I think that's what we're making is, we're seeing is you didn't do your homework, and you shouldn't require us to come along and do it for you later. And that's what you're doing. So that's the end of my comment.
Thanks, Pat. And it's funny you brought up site visits, Pat, because I was actually, wrote it on my list. I know I'm a visual person, so I'm actually was gonna talk to you about that, Ben, on some of these work projects when we have an opportunity to go out to a site. I know, and we don't actually have to do it as a group either, right? Just, you know, here, here's the information. Planning commission members might come by, or here's the homeowner's phone number. For me, I'm a very visual person, and it helps me. You know, I know August can look at plans and understand it really well, but I don't have that gift. I need to actually go and look at things, so.
One other thing, there's something that's separate about the policy setting process and site visits and the application review process and site visits. When there's an application review, uh, part of the application form gives the city, it has the property owner giving the city the right to go on it.
Okay, okay.
We don't have that right when it's just a policy setting session. And so it could be something where we organize a site visits through that process, but in this case, it's not something that happens, and it's very clear in the code that, that the site-specific analyses are the responsibility of, of the of, or of the applicant. And it's
Mike?
That's a very common tool that also helps to dampen future disagreement. If we were to go on a site and say that it's, we, we've looked at this and we believe it needs a seventy-five-foot buffer. There's no reason why the future property owner, the future applicant, would trust that the city has looked at things with their interest in mind. And so they'll be hiring their own professional anyway. And just taking the hands-off approach from the beginning means that they're not hiring a professional to come in an adversarial position to the city. We're accepting what their qualified professional has to say when they review the application at the time of development. And things change between twenty eighteen and, and now, and between now and twenty twenty-five, we might have another application.
Mike?
In, in regards to that, yeah, hydrology changes. But like Ben says, the, the city doesn't, didn't go out and map every stream, every inch, or every critical area in the city. It isn't the city's obligation or authority to do that, to go on a property and say, oh, this is the stream that needs this buffer. Besides the, the general guidelines set in the community's policies, the critical areas ordinance, that sets the general regulations, which were updated in twenty eighteen. Even the National Wetlands Inventory Map is only an approximate position of wetlands. And when an N W I identified wetland is on a property, it's the responsibility of the property owner to have an accurate assessment of that wetland done. So that, that can inform the site plan, whatever buffers are required. But even the National Wetlands Inventory is just an approximate location. The D N R stream mapping tool that the D N R uses for forest practices. Those are approximate positions of streams. So just like how the city will never have a fully informed omnipotent process, the similar condition applies to critical areas. The city is not going to have a fully informed, all-knowing understanding of the critical areas in the city. And when a property owner proposes development, the obligation of the property owner is to follow through with the requirements, and in this case, with critical areas, are listed in the critical areas ordinance. That was updated just a few years ago. I think the city should revisit this at the time that a periodic update is needed. I don't feel that revisiting the critical areas ordinance at this time in response to that community interest to do so is in the best interest of the city or the timeliness of the planning commission's duties here. I, I would make a motion to recommend to staff to fulfill a calendar with our ongoing planning commission projects. And also, and Matt's a motion to consider pursuing opportunity zones in the Rock Creek Public Access and deferring from the other items that have been community suggested priorities on a basis of time and interest and capacity that the planning commission has to deal with issues that are before us. We have things that have to get done. We have ongoing planning commission projects that need to be fulfilled. And the addition of opportunity zones in Rock Creek Public Access are probably some fundamental and important issues. The others cemetery planning, downtown on-street parking permits, and the critical areas ordinance should be tabled for a future year's agendas.
Thanks, Mike. What I'd actually like to do to just make it easier, let's just go through the list. I mean, I think we all agree with the ongoing planning commission projects. Do you agree with that, Davy? Just at least the ongoing planning commission projects that Ben has outlined. I think we, unless someone has anything else, we all agree that those need to be on the calendar, and I actually foresee us potentially having maybe two meetings, October, November, December, possibly this fall, right? So we can get through some of these things and actually get through the process. What I like to do with the community suggested priorities is, if you are for opening the critical area ordinance and adding that to our, our list of priorities for this year. So we'll just go around. If you're for it, just raise your hand. If you're not, we'll just keep the hands down. We'll just make it easy that way. Everyone okay with that process? We can work through these quicker. All right. So whoever is for opening the critical or area ordinance to deal with some of these issues that come up, raise your hand. I guess it would be just me. So we're not gonna, we're gonna scratch that one off. All right, downtown on-street parking permit. If you would like to add that to our list of items to cover this year, raise your hand. Number two, downtown street. Jeff? Davy? Davy's the yes on that? So that's two against three, so we're gonna scratch that one off. All right, cemetery planning.
Excuse me, can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what in heaven's name is an opportunity zone at the cemetery?
Oh, no, it's, it's I'd like to see that. I would really like to see that. Did you hear that, Davy?
I did, yeah, yeah.
Okay, moving on to cemetery planning, it doesn't have anything to do with opportunity zones. Okay, if you think we should take that on as a project this year, get involved, and that could be something where maybe someone from the planning commission attends it as a subcommittee, I guess, possibly. I don't know how you'd envision that. Let's get involved in that. Ben, because it sounds like it's an ongoing project.
Because it involves another jurisdiction, it'd be best to do that as a subcommittee and not worry about quorum between all
Right.
Both ones, so.
All right, so is there anybody here that would be interested in possibly being on a subcommittee for the cemetery planning?
I don't have a sense of urgency on this particular topic.
All right.
I mean, it, it seems to me something that needs to be done, but I don't know that it, you know, again, I don't have any sense that it needs to be done right away. If I'm, am I missing something, Ben?
It was a community suggestion. I'm not sure what led to that suggestion. I think, you know, cemetery districts, well, I've never explored what sort of plans they have to know what state they're in, to know how they might conflict or
So Mike, August, Davy, anybody interested in being on the subcommittee or getting involved in that?
Well, shouldn't the cemetery district come to you if they have an issue with clop?
This was just
Yeah. There seems to be a lot of room up there.
Yeah, apparently. All right, we're gonna scratch that one out. On to opportunity zones. As I know, Mike, you're interested in this one.
Yes, it presents some potential for the city that we should consider.
All right. Jeff, Jeff, August?
Go along with them.
All right, I'll go with that, Davy. Opportunity zone. Okay, so we're gonna add that one, Ben. Rock Creek Public Access.
I feel we have a commitment to do this one, given our prior discussions on this and our recommendations to the city council.
And having no, knowledge of it. So, okay, so we're gonna add the Rock Creek. So we've added, what, two of the three, Ben, on the community priorities? And then we have our ongoing projects. Are there any of the ongoing projects that we can scratch off, or are they just gonna come, you know? I mean, you've got the lot line consideration. That's, we've been working on that for quite a while.
That'd be the one to drop off.
Okay.
The way that you set that up before is as agendas permits.
Right.
Fill it with that.
So we'll just keep that same process. Okay, everyone's okay with that? All right, and then we have two additional, other potential projects, zoning code refor, no, you, I don't even know if you've had time to work on that at this point, Ben, the reformatting. Have you been working?
You've, it's been an ongoing process, muddling through.
Right, right.
I think there's opportunity to align some of that effort with the shoreline master program when, when that gets adopted.
Okay.
There's a lot of zoning code uses related to watercraft.
Okay.
That you can just refer to as SMP.
Okay, good. So that's something we'll do cleanup as other projects come up and can do it at the same time, right? Okay, that's perfect. And then new projects from the comprehensive plan. What, what is that one?
You know, that one's just an open-ended one. That if you see anything specific in the comprehensive plan objectives that haven't been addressed, are really dying to be addressed. Something for you all to, to consider. Same with the city council's priorities there. If there's anything that's they've said is one of their priorities, the, the planning commission believes it can really help with, then we can make that off of the city council.
Okay.
I think you're doing part of that in the parks, Rock Creek Access, and the city council's desire to look at our parks plan.
Right, okay.
Small pieces of that.
Great.
And downtown planning too, we're also kind of involved with that.
Okay, great. Well, the subcommittee thing really worked well with, you know, Jeff and Mike jumping on that. So I think in the future, some of these things we can do in that manner. That'd be great. And then, you know, one person going, one person reporting back in it, or streamlined process.
Yeah, and that'll be part of the kickoff reports when this project specifically come to you. Do you want to do a subcommittee and
Right.
Who?
This is the victim. Okay. Hey, thank you. Perfect.
So make sure you're applying to the mission meeting.
Yeah, that's why I have to share, like, what, two or three years running? I see how this works, you know?
You always take off on the wrong meeting.
Yeah, yeah, you're next, buddy. All right. I think we're on to thought of the month unless there's anything else under
Not sure if I can go back up or if it's still up from before.
Pat? Yeah, Pat, we'll unmute you. I don't know if you still had, had your hand up, or if you had a, a something additional to add. Just do the star, what is it, star six?
Star six. And gone.
And he's gone, okay.
Valerie?
Yes.
Just a quick comment.
Yes.
I, I want to thank Ben for the amount of work that he has been doing. I've been watching the emails flying back and forth between Ben and Leana and Rick and, and about this whole thing with Owl Creek and, you know, Rick and everything. And I understand their position in regards to the buffer that's there right now. But then, there is also a, a process, as Ben has talked about tonight, that allows that buffer zone to drop down considerably, and that falls upon the landlord to provide the correct report. If they, if they hire someone to come in and do a report that they do not provide all of the information that's within the ordinance that is required, then that buffer isn't going to get reduced. So there is a mechanism in place in the city right now to do that. But it's important But it's important that if you hire somebody, you've got to make sure that they are taking that ordinance, reading the ordinance and fulfilling that ordinance in their report. Because if they don't, those, those i's aren't dotted and the t's are crossed. And, and right now, that is the main issue with that permit on that particular piece of property. If you aren't aware of that. So do I think there should be a 50-foot buffer? I'm not politically correct, so I'm not gonna say, but but I think it's important to don't exasperate a situation and make it a lot bigger and slow down a property owner from being able to do what he needs to do on his property.
Thank you.
So.
Well. Oh, oh, Davey, go ahead.
So this is a little off the wall, but I'm inclined to think about stuff like this, but climate refugees. California is starting to see an exodus of people and I worry about us becoming another Bend, Oregon situation where we get a lot of people from Silicon Valley saying, wow, lovely little town you got here. We'll take it from here, you know? So it's something to think about in the future.
Thank you. Mary?
Well, I, I thought for the month, the Grange, the Grange will be doing a, a book discussion or a magazine discussion on the donut theory. Now Ben probably knows what that is. Kate Raworth has written a book on economics and it is called The Donut Theory. And it's how we can live in a, in, in a society with climate change and the resource, limited resources and how we can make our communities function better and keep the ecosystem around them functioning for their survival. And what, what we're planning on doing is inviting a person from Portland, which is actually implementing the donut theory into the, their planning process. And one of their city administrators is into that. So we'll keep you posted and there's also TED Talk on the issue. I'll send the, the link to you all. But it is an interesting theory. It is being implemented in Amsterdam, Portland and several other cities internationally. And I think if there's some thinking about for our future, especially as 2.5 million people are projected to come up the I-5 corridor from the Southwest and going towards what Davey was saying.
Yep.
And, and going north and they are climate refugees, climate change refugees. So I'm sure the spillover will happen at some point. So just something to think about.
Thank you, Mary. That was great thought of the month. I wish I had married you those, come ready, come prepared. All right, staff and commission reports.
Give you the unfortunate report of the parking intern for now. We'll see how that, that morphs and what we can do to get that done. First Street Overlook, that's the project that would take the sidewalk along the south side of First Street from Columbia to the cutoff to the waterfront. There's also a hiccup on that one. Wash Dot has decided to do a different level of design review for the project than we assumed that they were gonna do at the beginning or at the beginning of the project. The reason is that Wash Dot acquired that right-of-way when they were considering doing a two-way or a one-way couplet through town. And they, there was never a turn-back agreement to turn that right-of-way back to the city. And so they're saying that this is on our right-of-way. We've got a higher level of scrutiny for that project. And so we're figuring out exactly what that higher level of scrutiny means or what a turn-back agreement might look like and what's best for the project and the community at this time. So still working on that. Utility service outside city limits is another of the components of the increasing residential building capacity grants. It's something that the city council will be leading on because it deals so much with the water availability and future policies related to annexation. So that's something that will be sent to the planning commission for review at some point. But the city council will be the primary public forum unless it's something that gets swallowed by the efforts of this subcommittee. So it has not really been sorted out exactly what that means, so. But that's something to expect on your agenda at some point.
Great, thank you.
I have a quick question about that. So where they're running the sidewalk, what is the situation with the easement and Wash Dot doing a couplet? So when we were talking about our downtown plan, that was one of the options was to change the traffic flow. And I don't think that information, that, that area was actually still under Wash Dot. Are we gonna shoot ourselves in the foot by building this sidewalk going down there? And then five years from now, go, we're gonna tear it all up because it needs to move over 15 feet. Yeah. Is that a potential? I don't think it's a potential, but as far as exactly what's what Wash Dot's Because if they've got the right-of-way, they've got the right-of-way. They can use it at any time.
I, I feel that there's geological constraints to moving that sidewalk. So, so whatever's built there would remain.
The, the balance of how much they would prioritize an existing sidewalk and pedestrian connectivity to our waterfront versus through trap, throughput for long-distance vehicles? We don't know, but we'd have.
Well, what I'm saying is when the big discussion about what was going on with the plan, that information wasn't out there for review. No one was told that, oh, well, this area is still, you know, Wash Dots.
Yeah.
And that that potentially could still work as a couplet because we got a lot of pushback when we suggested that, that no, there's not enough space. And now we're talking about building a sidewalk that's gonna take space out of that potential.
One of the reasons for the couplet was the, the studies about what it takes to have a successful retail corridor and the amount of traffic we need. And I, I don't remember the exact numbers, but something like right now, we have on the low end of what you need going down Second Street. And so if you split half of that off, you're below what would make a, a successful retail corridor. So it wasn't as much related to the engineering needs of, of traffic. It was the
That's not whatever. I remember it was all about not having the space. And that, that the fact that that was already an easement and that they had that was not that that right-of-way already existed for that space. That's a different conversation.
Okay.
And now we're talking about putting infrastructure in that we're paying for, not knowing what Wash Dot is really gonna do. Are we shooting ourselves in the foot?
I don't, I don't think so because of
I feel like I didn't have all that information when we were talking about this before. So I, I would, I would kind of wanna address that situation again.
We didn't have it either and Wash Dot didn't have it when we signed a grant contract.
So well, that's, you know, things are fluid and they change. So this is something that, you know, we have to be as adaptable.
Yeah.
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 Thank you, Jeff.
Mary, I have just one last thing and, and Mike chime in on this too. You know, we've talked a lot about how infrastructure, transportation, water, sewer, you know, has bearing overlaps with this zoning decision. And we talked about it in our, in our meeting last Friday about really wanting to have some city council participation in this process. You know, whether we have a city council person join us in our work group to talk about what we're doing. But again, as we're, as we're looking at this stuff, trying to make sure that there's some coordination between what the city council has on its agenda that we don't see, but what has some relevance to, to what we're doing. So just put that out there, that we would, we would really welcome that participation.
And I will add one more comment to that. Having been on the planning commission for seven years, you know, that, you know, we work through these processes and we really did a heavy lifting a lot of times for the city council, lots of meetings, lot, you know? And we'll make a decision, a lot of times unanimous, and then hasn't happened often, but a couple of times we've gone to city council and they've overturned the decision. And, you know, that stings a little bit, you know, when we've put so much time and effort into a process and a different decision, decision has come to. And it's not that, you know, you do make that decision, but sometimes it'd be nice to hear back from someone in the city council explaining why that decision was made. That would be nice.
Having also sat on the planning commission for a number of years with Joe Schleit and some others, I, I totally understand that.
Thank you.
And in fact, we, I think last council, we talked about that again, but but yeah, that's, that's all, you never forget where you come from, I guess, so to speak.
Yeah.
And to me, if you ask somebody to do something and they do it and bring back the results, you don't sit for 45 minutes questioning whether or not that's a viable option. If you want to question that, do the work yourself. You know, don't, don't hand it back, don't hand it off to the planning commission. Do the work yourself. Now that's just me and my unpolitical attitude. But, you know, if I ask you to do something, then you've done it and, and, you know, I mean, you guys, you guys are capable, are capable of doing it than I am. Besides that, I don't wanna do it.
Well, there's that. Thank you. All right, unless there's any, one, one quick
I've never seen two council members in one of these meetings. So, you know, I wanna end this in a positive note is that, that is, that's, that's great to see.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think it begins to talk about what you guys are talking about. This is coordination going back and forth. So thanks for coming today.
Thank you, seriously. August, before we adjourn?
So I had another huge monkey wrench to throw in there. I would caution on Jeff's idea that, and this is my experience from previous planning meetings and different cities. When you start to integrate the different parts of the process together, city council attending planning meetings and attending as a city council member and not as a resident, it starts to muddy the water when it gets to the city council decision because it almost appears like a rubber stamp. Because, oh, they've been in the conversation in, you know, not as a observer, but as a participant, and now it's going to them for the vote. And I just, I, that just, I just wanna be a little cautious about that appearance from the public to where, like, wait, what's going on? You know, where's, where's the openness here? You know, we want, you know, to see what's going on. So that's
Good point. That's a good point, Jeff.
I would just have the observation that we had both council and planning commission pretty heavily involved in the downtown planning process. And I think it worked pretty well. I think, I, I understand what you're saying. I think you need to be cautious. I'm not asking them to come and participate in a planning commission meeting. But, you know, if we're doing a workshop out there to collect public comment, it would be nice to have some city council members sitting in those, those meetings as well to, to hear that. And I think having them engaged in, in how we plan that outreach and participate in that outreach, we're not asking them to come up with, you know, a recommendation.
Right.
Or to sign off on what the planning commission is doing.
It's just to be cautious of, you know, and it's more the onus on the council member because they're the higher tier as to, you know, observing how they are acting in that situation. Are they there as an observer? Are they there as a participant? And if they're a participant, are they a resident or are they a city council member? And what they say is representing what the city council will say. Because then the public sees that and says, oh, this council member said this here. That wasn't a city council meeting.
Right.
You know, and it gets, it gets very convoluted. And that's just my, my warning is I've seen that go very badly in the past.
And we don't wanna do that.
No.
We don't wanna repeat that.
Everyone to feel that they've been heard and that everything is above board.
I would totally agree with that. But just remember that if you have a council member here sitting here like here tonight, I, I am just like a public comment, okay? And you guys have the responsibility to put that value on my comment, not as a council member. Even though I may be reflecting what we've discussed in the council, you need to, it's not like me sitting over there in a chair, okay? I'm not voting. And quite frankly, I don't have any power as a council, okay? I, I'm, I'm squat, okay? The only time the city council, a councilman has power is when the council gets together and acts as a council. That's where if there, if you wanna call it power or authority, whatever you wanna call it. So yeah, I would be totally against sitting in one of those chairs in a planning commission meeting.
Yeah.
And that's not, that's not adequate.
Today, I mean, you haven't brought anything about when we did this in the city council. That's just my caution.
Yeah.
Is that if that was to happen.
Very good, it's a very good point.
As a councilman to say, well, last time we had a council meeting, that becomes that's, yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good point. You know, as, as an appointed official to a state board, I run into those same situations and dealing with various jurisdictions where I have to be clear that I am speaking for myself and not for that board.
Right. And that's what the public needs to know. That's all I'm saying is that there has to be that transparency.
I agree with you.
And be very cautious about that because it gets out of hand quickly when the public feels that they've been taken advantage of or not heard.
That's why also we're pretty careful about how many of us are here.
We appreciate it, though, coming. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that the city is starting a transportation study. You'll see traffic cameras throughout town. They're gonna be in one spot or a spot for a day. They're not recording any license plates. They're not doing any visual recognition. It is just recording a vehicle and what way it is moving. That is all. So when we get questions, it's not on all the time. I mean, so anyway.
So we can drive in circles and
So when you see it, just drive.
Drive erratically.
But there, and there will be a public engagement component of it. We don't know what it looks like quite yet, but it will be out of that.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're going to adjourn. Thank you for coming, everyone. We'll set on the Facebook page as well. And someone just stumped before.
Ben?
Yes.